Live to go. All right, give it about 30 seconds, then I'll let you take it away.
All right, Chris, we're still in practice session.
Uh, yep, you want to go ahead and start?
Yep, I'll click on start.
I got it. Director Ray, I think we're ready whenever you are.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. So, good evening, everyone. Those of you that are tuned in to this broadcast, this is a work session. Our work sessions are much more for informal than our regular meetings, and this is just an opportunity for us as a board to get up to speed with things that we need to know as we move forward with our decision making during regular meetings. Tonight, our focus is on the budget, and this is one of many series that we have had in the past with regards to not only our current budget, but also now really looking forward to our budget that we're about to approve for the 2122 school year. We have our chief financial officer here, Kate Kataska, who is going to lead the work session tonight for us to have some conversation about things that we need to know and also engage us in some conversation regarding some priorities we may have regarding the budget. Board directors, as you know, that other things that happen in our budgeting process is that not only do we begin discussing priorities and listening to our finance department regarding their findings and things that we need to know, but we also then go through a process where DAC certainly has an opportunity to weigh in on the budget process and their priorities. We certainly will consider department budgets later on in in our future meetings. We will have a couple of more budget presentations in May and again in June before we make a final decision to approve the budget near the end of June. So that's kind of the big picture. And so with that, it's my pleasure to introduce and bring on Kate Kataska. And I will say that our work sessions, if we were sitting around the table, we would be much more informal. And so hopefully, we can do that tonight, too, that first name basis is just fine, because this is just a conversation. So, Kate, I'll turn it over to you.
Greetings, directors. Thank you for having us here tonight to kick off this important work as we talk about, as Mr. Ray said, both our current year budget and then starting to look forward into prioritization for next year. While I wasn't here with you all last year, I can say I was with you from afar. I've watched every minute of those board meetings leading up to the adoption of the current year budget, and I can honestly say that we are in a much different place than we were in terms of conversations heading into this year. So tonight, we're going to look at concurrent states of the current fiscal year. We'll start to do a bit of a budget preview and set the table for where we're looking and headed for next year. Talk a little bit about our timeline and a very brief update on ESSER funding, but this is really meant to be an open dialogue and get a sense of your priorities heading into next year. We've certainly laid out some recommendations and some cost estimates and revenue estimates, but the bulk of our conversation tonight will really be a back and forth and a hearing from one another in terms of budget priorities as we as we head into the next fiscal year. Our director of budget, Colleen Doan, is here with me tonight, and she is really the master behind all of this. And, you know, from a budget perspective, I think she and her team would say it's always budget season, but we are really looking forward to officially kicking off the work of budget season for 2122. So, Colleen, do you want to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Kate. And before we get into the detail, Mark, would you be able to share the slides that we're all looking at the presentation? All right, thank you. So Kate just went through the agenda on slide two, so if we can then move to slide three. Right, so really excited to announce that the state supplemental, which is Senate Bill 21053, was really positive news for Douglas County School District, and it resulted in an increase in revenue for everyone within the school district, our neighborhood schools and our charter schools. There are a couple of factors I want to walk through. I'll go through those factors, what it means in terms of dollars, and then we'll discuss how we plan to save or spend those fiscal year and next. So to begin with, this finalized the funded people count for Douglas County School District. It was a slight increase from the revised budget presented to you all that you voted on back in January. So about 25 and a half funded pupils, just for some additional reporting that occurred in December after we built up the revised budget. The state was able to buy down the budget stabilization factor statewide, which contributed to an increase in our per people revenue. So when the state set its budget last June, they built in a budget stabilization factor, also known as a negative factor of 14% or $1.2 billion. They were able to make a slight reduction, it's still quite large, but dropped it to 1.1 billion or 13%. So when they make this change, this flows through to all school districts that have a state share or state equalization within their total program formula, meaning they aren't fully locally funded. So this is a benefit to DCSD because we do have a large state share within our funding, and so we were able to see that increase. So the reason why the state was able to increase the funding so substantially mid-year is because of the overall decrease in student count statewide from projections. So in theory, if the legislature appropriates a total amount for the School Finance Act, and they still have that total amount available in revenue, that means that every school district can get a little bit more per student if there are less kids overall. So by having that decrease in the budget stabilization factor and a slight increase in our funded people count, we're able to see an increase in our per people revenue of $132 per student from a revised budget that you all voted on back in January. So this is an increase from 7719 up to 7850. So what does this mean in terms of total dollars? For the entire school districts, since we're a very large organization, this is $8.6 million. And the district is obligated to pass through the charter school's share of the per people revenue, and that happened immediately beginning with their March transfer, but the part that's retained by the school district for district managed schools and departments is roughly 6.4 million. So in other words, the school district has an additional 6.4 million available in the current year that was not contemplated in the revised budget. So all positive news all around. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So this is our proposal as to what to do with those increased dollars. So first, staff recommends that we share, that we save our district's share of the increased per people revenue to offset increased costs next year, so that we can intentionally make the commitment now to all of our employees that there will be no furlough days in the calendar in 2021, 2022. So by reserving these dollars, which is approximately $3.9 million, all employees would have two paid days added back into their calendar, and then department directors and cabinet on top of that would have their additional three days added back into their calendar for a total of five. So by reserving these dollars now, that means that we don't have to wait until we know more about the 2122 School Finance Act to determine whether there will be furlough days or not. We can make the commitment now for all of our employees that there will no longer be furlough days. Beyond that, and I'll come back to this with more commentary on no furlough days, but beyond that, I'm planning to save to be able to support the e-learning model for 2122. So we have, as anticipated, additional students beyond a normal kind of pre-COVID year who are electing to stay within or to go into an e-learning model in place of their neighborhood school. And so this would allow us to reserve those dollars now, so that we do not have to pull dollars out of the site-based budget, out of the principals' discretionary dollars in order to staff e-learning. So we can keep our neighborhood schools whole and separately hire the staff needed for e-learning and provide the supports needed, up to $2.5 million for a successful e-learning model next school year. And then, as previously mentioned, the charter school pass, that happens effective immediately, so they've already started to receive that increased transfer, and that will continue through the end of the year, so their dollars are current and will not be reserved into the next year. So at this point, I want to open it up to Mr. Corey Wise to talk a little bit more about why we are proposing to reserve the dollars, to commit no furlough days next year in place of planning for potentially spending that right now.
Yeah, thanks, Colleen and Kate. And, you know, as we talked about a little bit this year, anytime we go into our district budget, we want to reinforce what do we prioritize? And starting off, when we look at the whole budget, we always go back to what's best for student learning. When you look at a district in post piece, we look at FTE for staffing, how we provide resources for students. And as we continue to build out with where we are, and you look at where we were in last fall with projections to where we were in January, and where we are now, we continue to be in a little bit better spot. It's not ideal. We still have a lot of priorities in which we're trying to place, but one of the things we felt that was very important is last year with roughly $31 million in budget cuts, we looked at at how we can keep that away as far away from schools and student learning as possible. So of those $31 million, we looked at 17 million at central administration and department cuts. And really, when we look at those things, and also then we had to budget further, and that got into then furlough days to save money. Then we also looked at the medical and para expense, and that was an add-on to employees last year. And that was one of six years that we've had to press on medical and and para costs on employees. So, you know, last board meeting, we talked about our benefits. We talked about it being at zero. We felt that in a year where all of our staff have worked in an ever-increasing challenging environment, working with remote and hybrid and in person and and doing that thing, we also wanted to make sure that the the furlough days was intended to be a one-year piece, and we restore those. You know, when we look at e-learning, we've been working with our schools to plan to possibly cover for some of the students that would have to be in e-learning. We would still like to to build in flexibility and and ask schools to partner with us a little bit, but we also wanted to maintain SBB and value that back towards student learning, again, one of our key priorities. Hence, while we're looking at how we can cover more of that within our own budget, and then also as we get to the end of this presentation, talk about those added funds coming back to us with ESSER funds and what we can do. So I think that just goes back to reinstate what we as Douglas County value, where we start to prioritize and where we value, we we need to to put money towards that, and goes back to some of those things.
Hey, Corey and Kate, if I might interject too, just if we have public watching, is that line that talks about the directors getting three additional days, we just need to make sure that that's clear, that our directors took a bigger hit in terms of furlough days, and that's really the reason why we're adding or restoring those days back to them is because they actually took five days instead of just the two days. Is that correct, Colleen?
Yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
Right, so that that is the proposal for the dollars that we have already started to receive in the current year. If we can go to the next slide, I want to talk about how there's more good news and what that could potentially mean for next year before we get into some of those priorities and have a in-depth conversation on priorities for next year.
Colleen, can I add one more thing?
Certainly.
In a lot of our parties, we talk about current year with those furlough days and next steps. I want you to know that we've had a lot of feedback, we've had questions, we've had dialogue about one-time stipends or payments to staff this year, and what else would be in their best interest. I want you to know, as we get into this a little bit further, as we start to prioritize how we appreciate our staff, how we look at what's in the best interest, one of the things we're gonna we're gonna speak to is one-time payments are nice, but when when everyone lost the furlough days and take home pay, and then also on that 1.25, people are taking home less. So we are looking at a raise and potential raises, and as Colleen gets into this, we wanted to move that forward to increase base, which is long-term versus a one-term payment. So we looked at our value to value of our staff, all employees, and not only help recognize the work they did this year, but the work that's going to continue, how we could restore, build back, and show value towards that. So that's one piece I also want you to know in thinking as we looked about all of our district goals in valuing climate, culture, value of staff, and moving that forward. We're going to lay that out a little bit more in these slides to come, but but I forgot to add that in the last part of of where we were in part of this thinking, okay?
All right. Thank you, Corey. So as we look forward to this upcoming year and potential revenue opportunities before us, it's really dependent upon the information that's prepared and presented by the state in their quarterly economic forecasts. So both the Legislative Council and the Governor's Office State Planning Budgeting released presentations to the Joint Budget Committee on March 19th that indicated that the worst of the recession appears to be behind us. So these numbers that I have on this slide are all based upon Legislative Council staff's presentation and not OSPB, but they're largely the same information. So Legislative Council has essentially every quarter shown a more higher fund balance and increasing morally more optimistic projection for the state of Colorado. So their state general fund expectations are that in the current year, revenue will be 571 million dollars higher than what they thought just a quarter ago in December, and projecting that revenue overall next year is also going to increase eight and a half percent. So this is good news for us. We care about this because the School Finance Act is largely dependent upon the state's general fund. And within Douglas County School District, being largely dependent on state share of revenue, it really matters to us what's happening within the state's general fund. So with this increase in revenue, both in the current year and projected for next year, there is almost $3 billion in excess reserve that the state is just sitting on. So they're only required to have a 2.86% reserve set by law, and so they can decide to have a higher reserve, or they can save, spend this strategically on their priority levels. So the governor put forward his budget request in November, and then he revised it in January. And back then, we all thought that it was overly optimistic and probably not something that would result in that level of funding. But given this information from the March economic forecast that there really is, you know, in excess of almost $3 billion additional dollars for the legislature to appropriate, that this is becoming an even greater reality and a potential opportunity for increased funding. So this would be about $700 per people higher than what we just got in the state supplemental, which was already over $100 per people higher than what we built our revised budget on back in January. So this is really good news. There's not a new projection specific to K-12, but it's just that the overall state economy and the overall information that's been shared with legislatures is very favorable and is in alignment with the information the governor has already requested for the School Finance Act. So we can go, yeah.
Does this also assume that full-day kindergarten will be funded, too?
Yes, they would not go back on that change that was made a couple of years ago. So before we go into what this would mean specifically for DCSD, if we go to the next slide, I want to just point out a couple of things that are happening within the legislature that wish for you all to be aware of. So the first one is House Bill 211164, which is the total program mill levy tax credit. So this one, as of last week, is still being discussed. It hasn't moved forward past its First Amendment, I believe. But what this would do is it would effectively reduce the tax credit that we have within our School Finance Act, local property tax, incrementally until there were no further tax credits applied on the mill certification and what actually is certified every December by local school districts. The reason for this is that we had this tax credit added into the current year because school districts had lowered their School Finance Act mills at the direction of the Colorado Department of Education over the last decade or so, and it was determined that that should not have happened. So it wasn't anything that was at fault of the school districts, including ourselves. It was at the direction of the Department of Education. And this House bill would, in theory, remove that tax credit, meaning that school districts who have the tax credits, such as ourselves, would see an incremental increase in that property tax until there were no longer tax credit. The information for us, our tax credit's only about one and a half mills, so it would only take us two years to no longer have that tax credit and be up to the 27 mills. Long story short, what this means for you all and what this means for any of the public watching and our taxpayers is that the local property tax would increase for Douglas County School District if this were to become law, but it wouldn't result in any increased funding for DCSD. It would mean that the state share could simply be reduced in order to reduce the burden on the state's budget in order to fully fund the School Finance Act. So still a long ways to go on this, but wanted you all to be aware of that, because if this passed, it could have large implications for next December's mill levy certification. And then the other item here, I just wanted to declare that as of last week, the School Finance Act has still not been introduced yet, and so the best information we have is the information that we can imply off of the March economic forecast and the governor's request. So obviously, enrollment plays a huge role in our revenue for the school district, as it is based on a per people basis. And so our enrollment projections do play a large role in that. So I want to walk through here how the budget projections are different from the facility projections for enrollment, and what this means for us in terms of revenue for next year. So our budget projections, which are the numbers that are first prepared by facilities in the planning department, then are reviewed by our executive directors of schools and principals, where they have the opportunity to make adjustments that are then used to set their site-based budgets, show a year-over-year increase of 1,128 students. So this is split between our charter schools and our neighborhood and other district managed schools with an increase of 429 at charter and 699 at our neighborhood alternative or other district managed schools. So the charter, that's simply as a pass-through, any revenue increase there is passed through to charter schools within their monthly transfer. So the numbers that we're really focused on are the increases or decreases to neighborhood, alternative, and other district managed school projections, which currently sit at an increase of 699. So our total projected enrollment for next year is 64,107. So as we continuously present updates to our budget, we will keep track of this as we have better information. For example, the charter schools had opportunities to revise their projections through March. Those are not reflected within this, and we will start to track the students that are actually in seats through an infinite campus as we get later into the spring, most likely in May and June, as we get closer to the adopted budget, to see where are our students. Is it still a bit early to do so on there? So overall, you know, showing a return of some of the students that have been lost or otherwise unenrolled due to COVID and this current school year. However, I do want to talk about the intricacies of the funded people count, because this is a unique phenomenon that we're seeing for this upcoming year because we are a multi-year averaging school district now. So because we were able to take advantage of the multi-year averaging in the current year, 2020, 2021, and it actually was the greater of two, three, four, or five years funded people count that we were funded on, we are actually seeing a decrease next year in that funded count, even though we will have less kids from one year to the next. So when we drop off the fifth year and have a different subset of years to do that average on, we actually have slightly less kids that will be funded on next year. So this is a decrease of 140 students, but I just want to point out that if we didn't have that multi-year averaging, and it was a true funded based on the kids we have, it would be 703 funded peoples less than the actual straight funded people count calculation based on projections. So we are still benefiting considerably from the multi-year averaging, but just wanted to point out that nuance there that it led to some benefit in the current year, that it won't be as great of a benefit next year. So if we go to the next slide, last slide before I pause for questions and then turn it into some of our budget priorities is what is the culmination of all of those different moving factors on the revenue standpoint? So we're talking about, you know, assumptions related to the governor's request, how much of that will be approved, different assumptions related to the funded people count. So what I've put here before you all is three different potential revenue scenarios ordered from lowest increase in funding to highest increase in funding. So like Kate mentioned at the beginning, we're in a very different conversation than we were a year ago, because a year ago, we were talking about how much of a cut were we going to have to make here every year? And we're looking at how much of an increase are we going to get here every year? So all of these situations demonstrate an increase in total program, so that's the School Finance Act revenue. So it's all good conversation to have, but when it comes to priorities for the budget next year, we do have to keep in mind that it is still a vast range in terms of funding. So the low end on that first row would be if we were funded next year at the same level we're funded on in the state supplemental. So that is 7,850 per student, and that would assume that that same level of funding were to roll over for the next year, and all else would be held equal, meaning no adjustments to risk or any further buy-down in the negative factor, and our funded people count, as it is roughly the same, it would be minimal adjustment there. The next scenario would be if the legislature were to approve half of the governor's request, and so the governor's request was through predominantly a buy-down in that negative factor or budget stabilization factor. So when looking at that, that would be 8139 per pupil or about $15 million increase in the district share of total program. So do you want to point out that these are just district share, district dollars retained? That increase per pupil would translate to our charter schools as well, but their pass-through is in addition to these dollars. So I feel from conversations with peers across the front range that this is a reasonable assumption to say that to model an opportunity that is at that 50% threshold, given the favorable information we're getting from the state on the economic forecast. So then the third option presented here is if the full governor's request were to be approved as written. So it's 100% of the request, which will bring our funding all the way up to 8559, and that would be $35 million of increased funding for district managed programs. So this would be, you know, a huge increase. It would more than restore the dollar amount that was reduced in 2021. As Corey mentioned, we cut $31 million from our district managed budget. So this would bring us right back to that 1920 level plus a little more. But again, this is kind of that maximum threshold, and that's not where we're building our base off of, but that's, you know, the opportunity of funding where as favorable as it potentially could be where we could end up. So with this, I just wanted to pause and see if there are any questions on this revenue side of the presentation before I turn it over to Kate to talk about some of the priorities.
I can't see all of you guys, so just feel free to jump, jump in with any questions you might have. Thanks, and thank you, Colleen, for the presentation so far.
I have a question, Colleen. If all things remain the same or whatever, if we keep moving towards where we are now, where we're on, we're back full-time, why the why the significant spend or push to for the funds to go to e-learning? What would that be encompass and entail?
Sure, so I want to see if either Corey or Kate would like to answer that from an academic standpoint.
Yeah, I'll start on that. So we, we didn't express check into all families that are in e-learning currently, asking them what their preference would be for next year. We have between 550 and 700 responses that want to stay in e-learning. We worked with each of our schools that if these students were to move from their school and stay We worked with each of our schools that if these students were to move from their school and stay in e-learning, what would that cost be? So they've been planning, schools have been planning from our SVB to help us cover that. In essence, if you have 30 students, what's that equate to a full-time teacher? Now, as much as that is a shared expense, the cost on a school and impact on people can be done. It's caused a stress and, and obviously just like we did this year with trying to staff e-learning. The ability now to help cover that from a district level, have schools start to plan and the next few weeks start to plan of what else are you going to do on contingency to build in models that we have not only the teachers to teach that, but also the electives to build in specialty support. So students with an IEP gifted and talented English language acquisition, how do we build in the supports and help fund that? With this added money, we felt that it would be a good way to protect the school-based budget. And with the school-based budget to help, help them keep all the resources within their school, value their staff, we'd be able to use teachers that request ADA, displaced teachers that with funding models with the new SBBs, any displaced teachers to teach that level and involuntary transfer to help fill those roles in that one-year-only system. So e-learning as a whole is looked at for one more year. So how we helped to plan for a one-year cost is why we're, we're budgeting it this way. So Kate, I don't know if you want to add a little more detail, but hopefully Anthony that explains a little bit of, of how we could support that out of SBBs. But one of our priorities was to also protect the SBB and we thought this would be a good way to help protect it because it's not transferring money back and forth.
I think you've covered it perfectly well, Corey.
I have a question also. In the reserve amount of 3.9 million to to restore the, the days, while I understand that, I'm also trying to understand the priority before transportation or student services or closest to students kinds of kinds of prioritizing. So I'm trying to hear, I heard the values, I heard, you know, the language, but I, I'm not hearing the priority. Maybe I'll see that as we continue.
So that's a great question. I'll, I'll start at that, then Kate and Colleen can also factor in. So when you say closest to students, our closest to students that make a difference, biggest impact on kids are within our teachers. And one of those things, when you look at the full calendar restoration, when we went to furlough days, that's a one-year recommendation of furlough days. So in reality, those full restoring or bringing back a full calendar is a natural transition. You would have to, we'd have to work with the board to say if we want to keep furlough days for another year. So that naturally comes back. So we built that in as one of our recommendations that we also feel is a priority. The other piece of that is when we get into our department-based budgets and recommendations, you're going to see more information on transportation. So we're kind of getting ahead. So Christine and I would say a couple of things. As we get going, keep that question. See if we answer when we start talking about our department-based recommendations of what we're building back. Transportation, we're looking at a number of things, how we look at all of our priorities within transportation. That might mean we increase salary. How do we increase routes? How do we look at routes differently, especially in certain areas? Changing the distance when walking or major streets might be there. So it's a equity base, not just a total amount of space within those. So Rich Cosgrove, our COO, talked about that at the last meeting. It factors in a little bit of these priorities, again, of where we look to do that in our department-based budget, along with then these greater pieces of the, of the larger context. So hopefully that puts it in context. Kate, you might be able to explain that a little bit better on the financial side, but I, but I hope it gives context of all of it. But we also have transportation very much a part of our priorities as we continue to get into the specifics of each department.
That's correct. And we do have a whole, a whole slide to discuss on transportation. Part of the celebration there is that we're able to actually fund much of the requested transportation proposal through the transportation fund. So we can do that at no impact to the general fund, but I'll get into more detail on that in just a couple of slides.
Go ahead, Krista.
Yeah, just a follow-up on what Anthony asked in terms of the money designated for e-learning for next year, does that mean that at our secondary schools, we won't have teachers who are teaching both our traditional in-person as well as teaching e-learning? In other words, will it make it more more similar to how our elementary students received the e-learning only option this year for our teachers? And then the other question is, is not, it's a second totally different question. So maybe I should just wait and hold on that one.
Okay, so I'll jump in and start on that one. And then Krista, feel free to ask your second one as we get going. So e-learning, e-learning next year, we'll have similarities of what we did this year, but you're correct. We're going to do it more like an elementary model. We're going to partner a little bit with EDCSD where we have a model and leadership that builds in a bit of a hybrid. In this remote learning, it'll be solely remote. Okay. So while we are going to partner and tag it with Greg Wiley, the principal of EDCSD and model our, our FTE, our instructional practices and also our support. So our administrative, our counseling, our mental health support, our special education support to really be more systemic in this approach. So we're getting ahead of this to be able to hire teachers separately for this e-learning model. Now, remember, e-learning is right now designated for one more year. So it's going to be a one-time cost. We are planning to budget for this right now regardless. But as we also start talking about those ESER funds, we are also looking later about how we also could look to pay that back. So some of what we're planning to say, we're going to cover regardless. But with these extra funds coming in such as ESER 2 and ESER 3, it also could help us as, as our budget gets finalized. So as David talked about, come June, we will have that final know of where the state budget's coming to us. We'll be able to show where those one-time monies will really come from. You can look at reserve, you can look at out of general fund, and then we can look at ESER and how we start to put each of these in the right box will come into fruition as, as these months ahead finalize it. So double answer, last part of that piece would be teachers will not be doing both. So in the high school model where you have teachers teaching classes and doing e-learning, we're going to move away from that. Every once in a while in a specialty course, you might have a teacher choose to do this as extra and overage. An example would be in current state for many years. Chinese, a teacher in a regular high school has Chinese and chooses to teach Chinese within EDCSD, but it's their choice to take on that extra. And they get a bit of an overage for those sections they have. This won't be the norm. It could be with some specialty courses that people would want to and choose to. But when we look at it, we're going to keep that separation. Currently, we have 577 students who elected e-learning. That's not going to be an exact number. We're going to create opportunity that we're, we're calling out to these families to find out what actually people wants and see if we've, we've missed everyone, but we're planning for all those things to build flexibility, to build, like you said, a separate system and, and create the teachers that, that are just doing this. And we can create support, resources, training, ongoing, and try to learn from what we've done this year and make it even stronger for next year.
I'm just going to hold on that second question. It might get answered as we go along. So.
All right, Colleen, looks like we're back to, oh, Susan got the hand in quick there. Go ahead.
I should wait till the next part or not. I'll just raise like the 3.9 million tied to the furlough days. To me, it just seems like that's one-time money that you know, when you're talking about pay, that's ongoing, that's next year's budget, and it should be tied to what next year's budget looks like. And I guess I just keep wondering, is there a way to use the 3.9 million to advance our strategic plan this year? To advance, you know, and reward teachers and staff this year for the work that they've done. And so I'll continue to listen as we move forward. But every indication I see for next year's budget, it looks really positive and it feels like next year's budget should be addressing whether or not there's a need for furlough days.
Yeah. And as, as we get towards the end, I encourage you to keep that thought. I'll, I'll try to address it a little bit now, two different ways. The furlough days, we need to restore and it's, and you know, remember the furlough days to change our regular calendar, number of days worked is a one-year decision. So last year to save money was a one-year decision that saved us that amount of money. In that one-year decision, we have to adopt for that cost going into next year. So we're restoring that, adding back that into the cost. We have regular days. That gets teachers and staff back to where they were on just a number of days, therefore pay. Now, at the same time, you're right about taking a look at this year and the amount of work that was done this year. We want your feedback. One of the discussions we've had, starting with with all of our central administration, with, with our principles a little bit is, is forward-facing. And when we look at salary and getting that base and moving that forward, that's where we've really tried to put the emphasis towards that, that 2% raise as a target. And depending on where we fall within those three tiers. So you saw the bottom level, you saw kind of a middle, and then we saw where the top piece would come of that state funding could help to impact that positive impact for next year, which is ongoing. So a one-time payment of this year is a nice, is a nice recognition. But we also felt moving that for everyone that's moving into next year as a increase in base, that's also ongoing, we felt would be a stronger value add to say, thank you for all the extra work this year and to have that ongoing in, in nature. So, so when that, all of that feedback and questions keep asking, well, we want to put in our priorities of, of what we are also listening to from, from not only our principals, our teachers, our staff, but also your recommendations are critical in this piece. And that's, that's why we're trying, we're doing this very early. So where we were last year at this time and where we are this year, we started this work in October and moving it forward. And so the good part is getting all the recommendations and then we'll keep adding to and coming back to make sure that, that we take inputs, priorities and recommendations and move those forward.
All right, Colleen, Kate, keep on moving.
All right. So I'll turn it over to Kate now to speak about some of the priorities.
Surveys through the DAC into the individual school accountability committees. And this went out a number of weeks ago. And based on where we were at in the process, what we asked individual committees to do was rank order some of the items that were reduced from the budget for 2021. And rank order those in terms of their top priority in order of how those would come back or be restored into the budget. So that, those surveys indicated that sort of in the, in the top priority for almost nearly every, every SAC was the reinstatement of the furlough days or the restoration of a full calendar. Next on the list was the restoration of SVB funding. A lot of that is actually addressed through the recommendation to preserve SVB funding and ensure that e-learning is fully supported through it and an identified funding source as opposed to having to make reductions to school budgets. Third on the list is transportation, which we, we know to be a conversation and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that, as I said, in a future slide about the plans to restore some of the funding to transportation and adjust routes there. And then the other items on the list were, you know, various groupings of, of central office or the DBBs that were reduced. And so, you know, whether the focus was on kind of the district-wide support services or things like school leadership, teaching and learning, et cetera, et cetera. So we asked committees to, like I said, rank order each of those. And the top three on the list, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about how we're planning to address. So if we go to the next slide, this slide kind of lays out the initial leadership butters, budget considerations. So much of these considerations are focused on kind of the system-wide components of the budget and those, those items that restore pay to full or the 1920 level of pay. So we've talked about furlough days and that calendar being restored. We talked on the, the previous board meeting about being able to carry on our benefits into next year at no premium increase to our staff. And that is a huge celebration that, that that is happening. Again, I think we are one of the very few in the, the metro, metro area who's even able to do that. And we've only had to actually carry those costs forward to our employees, one out of six years. And so really, it's very pleased to say that that's not going to have to happen for, for next year. We'll get into the conversation about pay increases. And what we mean about by FTE staff here is these are our full-time, part-time classified and salaried employees. This does not include things like coaches or substitutes that would not be considered a full-time equivalent. So mileage also bubbles up as we talk about kind of the restoration of whole pay. For 2021, we have completely eliminated mileage reimbursements to our staff. And we know that we have, you know, while sort of a minimal amount in total, as we look at the aggregate of the budget, there are several employee groups who, this was a very significant impact to pay. Those that are, you know, driving from site to site, serving multiple sites in our district, none of that mileage has been reimbursed for, for the current school year. So when we asked department leaders to build their DBBs, we, we allowed them to plan for reinstatement of mileage and we will look at that across the board as we consider whether or not to reinstate that policy. If there is a benefit to a pandemic, you know, certainly many of our meetings are happening virtually and then most of that mileage was able to, you know, not have to happen or meetings could have been virtually. So the mileage wasn't necessarily a factor. But as we return to a more normal and in-person world, we do estimate that, that those reimbursements are going to come back and be more needed into the next school year. We talked about continuing to support e-learning within the site-based, but or without reducing the site-based budgets and making sure that we're planning now with the, the increased funds in 2021 so that we can do that at no harm to school-based budgets. And then we'll talk about some strategic reinvest investments within our schools and departments. And Colleen will talk about the process that we go through to elicit that DBB feedback and see what, what types of requests and the amount of requests that are out there. But in those upper bounds of revenue scenarios, we are certainly in a position to be able to make some of those strategic reinvestments and then restore some of the funding that was reduced heading into 2021. So moving to the next slide. So the transportation, as I mentioned, the, the sort of bright light here is that we're able to fund this proposal regarding transportation at no cost to the general fund. We will actually use reserves within our transportation fund. Have been working very closely with our chief operations officer, Rich Cosgrove, to develop a plan that addresses kind of the multifaceted, kind of complicated nature of our transportation issue. What we have laid out here is actually an increase to our driver pay to set the minimum at $20 an hour. What this does is puts us at a more competitive level with neighboring school districts, folks like RTD and other companies that, you know, enlist CDL drivers and are paying at a much higher rate. This puts us much more competitive towards those other entities. We're all actually also looking to repurpose some of our existing vacancies that are in the transportation EA category and move those into bus drivers so that we, we can more adequately fill those vacancies and staff for shortages that may occur by having trained and licensed drivers on staff. Where a driver can fill in it for a TEA, but a TEA cannot fill in for a driver. So making sure that we're fully staffed in those areas that are hardest to fill and hardest to sub in for if a vacancy or, you know, someone is on a leave or whatever that might be. Also looking at a number of other areas within transportation. So I think as Corey mentioned, working closely with Rich and his team, surveying employees and students and families regarding transportation needs for, for next year. Looking to see what we can make in terms of improvements or changes, even throughout the course of the remainder of this year. And as we get into more of the discussion components of our, our talk tonight, Rich is here to answer any of those transportation specific questions that you might have. And next slide. All right, Colleen.
All right. So when it comes to our department budget request, I want to preface this with taking us back almost 12 months now to the reductions that we made in order to balance our 2021 budget. So we made a reduction of $31 million to our district budget within the general fund. And that comprised the, was comprised of the following items. A $17 million cut to our district departments and district-wide budget. $4 million for furlough days. $3.5 million cut to our school budgets through the site-based budget people allocation. And $5.5 million in other areas predominantly reserves or increases to revenue budgets. So setting that stage, 17 million or about 50% of the cuts were to departments. Our departments have completed their request process for 2122. Spent the last about four weeks going through that line by line with every department budget owner. And the total requests add up to 8.8 million, which means that the total requests for next year are about half of what was cut in the current year. So this is really important to note because we are not looking, we're not proposing fully restoring everything that was was cut. We are proposing, and there'll be a very thorough review process undone by the superintendent's cabinet that's going on currently to put forward priorities that only add up to approximately half of what was reduced in the current year. So this detail is divided in various areas. But I wanted to visually show you the areas that we're seeing the requested increases. So the pie chart on this slide organizes a portion of the requests by strategic theme. So the reason why the components of the pie chart don't add up to the total $9 million is these are self-reported by the individual departments. So departments have the opportunity to self-report how their requested increases align with this strategic plan. And so the various colors within this pie chart represent the various tenants of our strategic plan themes. And so the largest area of requests happened to align with the first theme, which is the health, safety and social emotional supports of our students. And around 61% of our requests are aligned that way. We then have about 6% are aligned with the positive and supportive culture. Around 5% are aligned curriculum with flexible instructional delivery. Around 22% is the equitable distribution of resources. And then on the last 6% is the recruitment retention and development of high-quality employees. So we have been using zero-based budgeting for the last about four years and we've largely you know, reaped all the benefits from that process, from that budgeting methodology as our departments are frankly, kind of bare bones in terms of staffing, very lean on operating structure. And so this is looking at strategically reinvesting dollars based upon our priorities. So utilizing a priorities-based budgeting approach to add dollars back in that still all have to be reviewed and prioritized by the superintendent's cabinet. So we're just in the early stages of having those conversations. But ultimately wanted to present the the summary of all the requests that cabinet is going through. Because when we come back to you on April 20th, and we'll talk more about the timeline later. But in April 20th, we'll be presenting to you cabinet's recommendation on department priorities. And so that will be some combination of information that is part of this dollar figure here. Before going to the next slide, I just want to point out one thing that is fairly important from a financial perspective is that out of the total request, about half of it or 4 million has been identified as non-discretionary. What this means is that these are dollars that we will need to pay regardless of funding source because they are either stipulated by law or they're contractually obligated to pay them. So it might be something such as special education out of district tuition or paying for the foot center. We're still talking about personalized learning or paying for SROs or pay utilities. We don't have control over things like the rates that Excel and I charge us for, it's like electrical and natural gas usage. So there are areas within there that if we don't fund it out of new dollars, it simply means we need to use reserves or we need to make reductions in other areas because we will need to add those increases within our budget. So this is a overall summary of what all those requests will be. And if we go to the next slide, this is really the the meat of our presentation here are the different scenarios. So within your packet of materials, you have this as a separate PDF. I recognize that this is small font. So you can refer back to this separately and do with it as you please. But what we've organized here are really three different scenarios of potential priorities and how we could align those with the revenue scenarios that have presented to you today. So it's organized from left to right, from lowest revenue to highest revenue. And just kind of to acclimate yourself to the spreadsheet first, that revenue is that top line. Then there is a total of all the expenses. And then the bottom line that is italicized, the gain use of reserves essentially is recognizing whether we would need to draw down reserves in order to fund all of these potential operations or whether we would be generating reserves, meaning we could add increased expense budget or save them for other purposes. So that's how it kind of works. And then I'll go into the detail now. So the first line item across all scenarios is a pay increase. So this is to what Corey spoke to on a genuine pay increase after the restoration of the full calendars. So within the first scenario, which was 6.5 million, this would be a 1% increase to all full-time equivalents plus an estimated 500,000 for position-specific compensation adjustments that would need to be made. So this is in order to make incremental progress on the positions and the salaries to align with position titles and make for progress on improving those, the salaries of specific positions. And then the next scenario at the 15 million would be to change that to a 2% pay increase. And the third scenario at the 35 million would be a 2.5% pay increase. So you can see with compensation at approximately 85% of our general combined general fund, each percent increase is a substantial increase in the cost. So it's the single largest line item within any of these scenarios. Underneath that, we have the restoration of mileage reimbursement. So on the lowest revenue scenario, that would be restoring to back to approximately 50% of the pre-COVID level mileage. So this would mean that staff would continue to need to monitor how frequently they are physically visiting schools and continue to maintain a virtual presence for many meetings. But we recognize that some things such as itinerant teachers for special education gifted or English language simply cannot do their job working with students virtually. And so they are going out to schools regardless of whether that mileage has been reimbursed or not. And the two higher options would bring that mileage back to the pre-COVID levels. The third on the list, going into the priority on our school budget. So this would be we had ability to, in addition to not adjusting down the budgets for e-learning because we're committing to using fund balance for that by actually adding additional dollars into the site-based budget. So back in the spring, when we cut 3.5 million, it was cut from the site-based budget people allocation. So the middle option would provide that back at 50% of the amount that was reduced. And the highest option would be at 100% of that. These dollars will be put back into the schools utilizing our new site-based budget weighted funding formula, meaning that it would be added back into the schools in an equitable manner based on the 2122 enrollment projections. We would not be able to do that if funding were on the lower end, which means that our SVBs would remain as built by the principals and their school staff in February. So no dollars added, but also more importantly, no dollars reduced from the school budgets. The next line is what I spoke about on the previous slide about some of the non-discretionary increases. And you'll see that this dollar amount is the same across all three revenue scenarios. Because regardless of the revenue we have available, we will need to pay for these items. And so if it were not out of new net revenue, it would mean we either would be drawing down fund balance or we would need to make reductions in other areas in order to have a budget that revenue equals expense. The next line, where definitely, I'm understand, you know, some conversation today regarding your priorities are those department-based budget FTE or other discretionary increases. So this is where our departments are putting forth requests aligned with our strategic plan to add staff or add other items, whether that's additional pay for our school staff or operations in order to reinvest within our school district to promote our student learning and our student achievement. So on the low end, we would not be able to approve any of those requests and our department budgets would outside of the non-discretionary increases remain flat at the current levels. In the middle scenario, we'd be able to fund approximately 50% of those requests. And at the high level, we'd be able to fund all of those requests. So this doesn't include any potential need for increased literacy curriculum materials. And I did speak with Matt Reynolds on that. And a very, very rough estimate would be that that would have a $5 million cost of increased literacy curriculum materials, but that is based on per-school pricing. And the CIPG department would need to engage strategic sourcing for a more specific and more detailed itemization of that. And then each option for increased literacy curriculum materials would need board of education approval as well. The next line here would be to restore contingency back to 1%. So this is more procedural. There was a special resolution last June to lower that contingency to 0.9% instead of a full 1% of the operating budget. And we would only recommend restoring this fully in the high-revenue situation as we feel confident we could operate at the lowered level if the funding was at a lower amount. And then finally, another reserve within here would be a potential enrollment resort reserve. So I believe we have not had a separate enrollment reserve since 2017, 2018. And what this would allow us to be able to do is set aside part of new dollars ongoing revenue for potential loss of students, meaning students were not realized in October as projected in the adopted budget so that we didn't have to draw down reserves. And the whole loss wasn't fully absorbed by our SVBs. We could help also some of that. And so we logically would only do this if we were in a surplus situation after budgeting for all other areas because it would mean that we were not drawing down reserves for that. So in those first two scenarios, funding these items would require a use of reserves. Again, we have a very healthy fund balance. We have a substantial amount in our unassigned fund balance right now. And we will be providing an update for that in May when we present third quarter financials. And then in that third situation, since it is a quite sufficient increase in the revenue that would generate an additional $10 million available that we would seek your recommendations on priorities as to how the school district should spend or save that $10 million. So at this point, we want to now open it for discussion on the priorities by the Board of Education and conversation on some of the information that's been presented as district considerations.
Thanks, Colleen. Directors, are there some questions you have or thoughts you have in reaction to the scenarios that Colleen's presented to us? Go ahead, Kev.
Hey, thank you very much for all the informations. There's a couple of questions I would like to ask. One, the Lixia project, what are you going to do with agility? So I think there's given there's an article from China and I talk about, you know, that particular tools. And with then there's only a one-year contract. So I'm not quite sure there's any budget items. I remember that last year you seen Mr. Taylor's budget. So I'm not quite sure what this year, what you're going to plan to do with that. And also regarding to a e-learning in general, these years, we have a director of e-learning, a new positions and a whole bunch of infrastructure that are supporting the 6,000 students. So Lixia seems like we're going to do a little bit different approach. What happened to that infrastructure that we built up? Can we became the resources over there or we absorb those people that currently working for under the auto e-learning? Thank you.
Yep. So great questions. Going into next year, as of right now, our number of students that are going to partake in in their remote learning is is very, it's much smaller. So currently it's 577. We're going to continue that outreach to get actuals. And what I mean by that is making sure that our our student number for e-learning is accurate. So the e-learning administration, along with neighborhood schools, are calling families, checking in, making sure we know where people want to be. That's going to help us with staffing. With the current numbers of 577, we, the the amount of support for e-learning at the administrative level is going to be a little bit different. So the good part, Lisa Tolson, who's one of the administrators with e-learning, actually just was hired to be the principal at Cherry Valley. So when we look at great people supporting our our e-learning students, we're going to still try to continue that. However, e-learning is going to be partnered with EDCSD. EDCSD will still continue as it is. It's its own separate school. How we build out those resources? When you ask about Edge Newity, Edge Newity was purchased and actually they've worked with us to try to refund and restore some of that cost. What we didn't use well and didn't necessarily like, that they we worked with them to try to reinstate a lot of some of that back to our district. So the purpose that it served this year is we move forward. Next year, all the work will go out into an RFP. At EDCSD, Greg Wadley and his staff use resources, but also build their their curriculum. And so they will help to model and build that with our teachers. So it won't look exactly the same this year. Even the resources won't necessarily be the same. And that's why we're looking at partnering that under an umbrella. It's an extension of. It's not going to be EDCSD, but we have a model in which we can learn from this year. And then also have a map model of of leadership staffing and instruction that we can tailor it a little bit more like EDCSD and also provide teachers to help each other PD and work it that way. So Kevin, I hope that explains it well within the question of Edge Newity that EDCSD really uses separate and different content. They they support with separate electives and also for the virtual times, but they also build their own content. And after a year of doing this and also really starting to hire those teachers. So we'll be able to post people apply and hire those teachers and provide the training from now to get ready for August. I think we'll be in a little bit different spots to move this forward.
So in a nutshell, the entire structure under Dana Way now, which is a director of e-learning, will not exist next year.
It's going to look different, yes. So
And 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 agility will only have one year contract. We all know that last year we were, the boys being rushed into approving that. So we're going to have a RFP to look at different tools to try to find out better or more appropriate tools for the next school years. I so I'm not quite sure I understand what the explanations about that. Or are we going to still using that, but make sure that we use it in a more refined manner so that we can take advantage of what the tools given to us?
Yeah. So, you know, with Edge Newity, as a, as we move forward in years to come, we have a summer school and remediation or recovery recredit system. So for students who have lost or failed credit at the high school level, we've always had a need for a recovery recredit system. We use that front within our student assistance program. We use it within each of our high schools to look at how we can remediate, help students recover credits, summer school and that sort of thing. That will go out into RFP. There have been times where Edge Newity can serve that well with support of those high school supports. As far as e-learning goes and remote learning system for next year, we won't be using Edge Newity. So to answer your question, if Edge Newity is used, it'll be in the So to answer your question, if Edge Newity is used, it'll be in the recovery credit system. It'll be used within those student supports. But in our e-learning, we'll have a shift and not use that. So we will have some added needs of support. So as I said, we're going to have to hire teachers. We're going to have mental health, counseling, language support, special education support, which we'll hire for. In fact, we're also looking at within these new budget models that we're getting additional special education services and financial support. But as that starts to finalize in the months to come, we'll start to define that for you. But it's going to allow us to also separate that support. All of our special education teachers this year were both doing their work within schools and also supporting e-learning. We're going to look to model a different plan next year. So we're, we did a lot of things well, but we're learning from what we've done. And we're trying to, to use this time now to build forward and provide a, you know, a difference. And we also have a lesser amount of kids within it, K-12, but provide a little bit different structure in delivering remote learning, remotely learning.
And I just want to correct my mistake. I apologize, you know, the daughter of e-learning is actually Diana Smith. I miss Blance, you know her name. I apologize for that.
Yep. Now, we're going to need, we're going to need some supports within that region. But that's not defined yet. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to define with a number of students. Work to provide the support and post for it. Diane Smith has been an asset to our district for a long, long time. So in each of these roles, we're going to work with everyone to try to get the right people in the right spots. And also then look at other roles where we can build people in. So, so the e-learning teachers, we hired a lot of great people that have done an amazing job. When we look at people are displaced, it's going to be a system that we're going to post and hire. And then we also have another number of positions that we hire within our district. So as we look at the, the support and the teacher services and administrative support within the e-learning and other roles, we always want to try to keep our great people. It might not look exactly the same in their role, but they might want a difference in how they do that too. So it's going to, the good part is we're early, we're planning forward, we're planning better. We're going to adjust to our needs and, and continue to define this as we go. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, just help me understand. Why would we use reserves for the, for the furloughs instead of building it back into the regular budget so that it's in the regular system for the future too? And as we prioritize teachers and the needs of teachers, it, I'd like to express some priority around teacher pay. And why doesn't that just fold in? Is there a reason that we can't just, it, it doesn't seem like it's forever if we use reserves?
Kate or Colleen, on that part, I'm going to let you, Kate, go first on that side with allocations and where that would go in this preliminary part.
Sure. So, you know, in any Budget Director 101 class, they tell you to not use one-time funding for ongoing resources. But we're in a little bit of a unique situation where, because we have the passage of the supplemental in the current year and indication that our ongoing funding will be much more stable, if not growing, that is where the comfort level comes in to be able to propose the use of saving the 2021 allocation to commit now to fund the furlough or the full calendar for, for this year. Colleen, I don't know if you would add anything to that?
No, I think that about covered it. I would just stress that it's, we're in a very unique situation. We normally would not align one-time dollars with an ongoing expense. I even, you know, led a little presentation for other school districts educating on that very specific concept a couple of weeks ago. But this is a very unique situation. And so we have the opportunity to make a commitment now. And that's, I think, the biggest thing is where we want to make the commitment now before we know School Finance Act that we will not have furlough days next year.
Yeah, in a, in a nutshell, we want to ensure our employees know now that we will not have furlough days. So we want to make a guarantee that we're going to cover that we restore a full calendar. In a tough year where, where all of our employees lost money from their paycheck, we want to guarantee that. As we get moving forward and we see what the budget is finalized, those can be shifted. But value to our employees and, and going back to our educator excellence is going into hiring season, going into end of year, we want to ensure that they know this piece. So I think that's a guarantee that we can make. And then as you adjust those funds, as we get into May and June, we'll know where we fall within this budget. Remember, this is preliminary, this is planning, projecting, and it'll solidify as we go. But we want to make a strong guarantee to our employees so they know what we're working for and what we can provide.
And one last thing that I'll add there too, Corey, is that, you know, if we look at those, those three revenue scenarios, that's a $30 million swing on what we could potentially see for next year. And so as we move through the process and figuring out kind of what priorities exist under each of those scenarios, we're in a little bit of an if-then kind of mentality. If this materializes, then we can do this. If this materializes, then we can do that. And we want to make sure that the restoration of calendar is not one of those if-then scenarios that we can confidently say that that will not occur for, for next year and leaving some of those other items to be part of that if-then conversation.
Go ahead, Krista.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for all the information. So, so that does, you know, clearly that's a change. As you guys have said, it's not, not usual that we would do the one-time funds for ongoing things. And then I also noticed, and actually I was going to ask this question, and then Colleen mentioned it, that it looks like departments did not do zero-based budgeting this time around. And, and I'm also looking at, or having some questions about reserves. I guess it just feels a little bit like we are making some changes in our overall philosophy. And maybe that isn't accurate. But I know that in the past, we've really prided ourselves on zero-based budgeting, on having our really strong reserves, which I believe we still do, even though we had to take some from contingency. You know, we looked at that carefully and you guys helped us through that to know that, that that was still a strong financial position. But as we obviously all have that goal to continue doing that and to continue having, you know, a credit rating that there's not a district in Colorado that has a higher one than us, I don't believe, but still at this time. And I'm just kind of wondering why the change now from zero-based budgeting? Why the change from, I, I don't see, you know, strong recommendations about restoring our contingency reserve? And I also had a question about reserves within departments. I know there was, I think it was on slide 11. You don't have to go there, but it talked about transportation and using some transportation reserve money. And I guess I just don't remember us really having reserve in our departments in the past because we were doing that zero-based budgeting. And then one final question about a reserve, which I'm not even sure is technically a reserve. This might be semantics that I'm not understanding. But when you look at slide 10, it says that premium increases are absorbed by the medical fund. And so I think that has to do with, we have the Kaiser option and we also have the, I think, our own health insurance or whatever the other option is. And there's that medical fund that kind of can go up and down with that based on how much we pay out. So, so just for clarification, it sounds like, I mean, from that slide, that there is a premium increase, but that we as a district, which I fully support, are using that medical fund to cover that increase instead of passing it on. So just all those questions, I'm sorry, I tried to not give you so many at once, but those just all kind of fit together for me. So thanks.
I'd be happy to address those and let me know if I missed any, but I think I wrote things all down. So I just want to clarify on the zero-based budgeting. Our departments absolutely still did their zero-based budgeting process. And we went through and we had the same conversations where we look and we start from a zero base. They have to request for any position that they wish to staff. They have to start at a zero for all their operations. What I meant by that is having gone through this process now four years in a row, we have essentially reduced as much as we can without significantly impacting our students because we have gone through, we have cut all of the department reserves. We've cut all of the areas where there may have been some slight padding added so that we can have as lean and efficient of a department budget as possible. So when I was mentioning the priority-based budgeting, that's more the results of saying as we strategically reinvest, we want to align building up departments in alignment with our strategic plan so that we aren't just adding FTE here or there at the individual requests of the specific department owners, but that everything is tied together and everything follows the district's vision. So I apologize if that wasn't clear earlier. On the reserve pieces, so transportation is actually its own fund, kind of like how the medical plans are out of its own fund. It's almost like the enterprises, our nutrition services are before and after school, but it's not an enterprise because there is a substantial inner fund transfer from the general fund. So whenever we present our financials, either through the budget or the annual report provided by Jana every year, you'll see our transportation is in its own fund 25. And so those are dollars held separately from the general fund. And due to the vacancies that exist in the current year because we haven't been able to fill driver positions and due to underspending fuel because our buses just simply haven't been driving the miles that they normally drive, we've been able to build up reserves within that fund. And so it's separate from the general fund. It's not like the other department-based budgets. And those are dollars that just happen to be part of that fund that we have the opportunity to take advantage of now that we haven't been, had available to us in the past due to the significant budget underspend in the current year. And so then within the medical fund, you are correct there that there is still a slight increase in the projected costs of the medical claims for the Cigna Alesian self-insured plans next year. But we can do that out of the fund balance in the medical fund because we have built that up over time and we are strategically drawing it down, but still enough to cover our contingency so that there's no premium increase to our employees or to our schools and departments that everything is just absorbed within that fund.
And, and Colleen, just to go along with what you just shared in relation to the medical premium increases that will not be passed on to employees, it was a favorable claims year unlike the year before. I just want to confirm that with you. And also through our RFP process, we were able to secure better-than-typical rates for renewal for the following year. So it would be less of a renewal year than last year, but just wanted to let you know it was more of a favorable year, which enables us to consider not passing on those increases to employees. Colleen, is there any other detail that you want to add? I know that you added some wonderful detail just previous.
Go ahead, Krista.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So really the message is that the district is covering any, any increase in claims or any increase in the renewal for the medical cost. That, that is what, that's correct. And then in terms of the transportation, and I, and I understand that we have the separate, you know, I think 25 is the number for the transportation funding. I understand that, but is that not also one-time money that we can't predict that we'll have again? Or is that something that is a little bit more predictable? We usually have something. I just, I'm wondering about that, if, if we have ongoing expenses that we're allocating it for.
Their reserves are one-time as well. So it would be using those in other, you know, unique circumstance. We normally have about a million dollars within that fund and we have in excess of 3 million, almost in excess of 4 million projected in that fund as well. So yes, they're one-time, but it would, we would be able to draw those down over the course of multiple years. Ultimately, we would need to increase the funding for transportation, but the intention is that we would be able to do that once COVID was more in part of, kind of our history and not the present when funding is higher and we are no longer in a situation where we are looking in late March of a $30 million potential range in our revenue.
And finally, I promise, just this is my last follow-up, but I think the only question you may not have hit on was the contingency reserve and why that doesn't seem to be a priority to restore right away? And I'm not arguing about it. I'm just trying to get more information to see why that isn't a priority immediately.
I can answer from my perspective and then turn over to Kate to add anything there. But from my perspective, the contingency really is to set aside for the unknowns that we already plan to appropriate. So it's an assumed spend. We have not spent our contingency yet this year. We haven't even spent half of it yet, which is why you haven't seen any reports on contingency spend. And so the fact that we've had, despite everything that's gone on this year, a favorable year of not yet reaching that 50% threshold, I, I feel that we are able to operate at the lower level. Yes, in a perfect world, would like to bring it back up to the 1%, but from my perspective as Budget Director, it's not a top priority when we know that there are needs out there that directly affect our students of, you know, additional support that they need for their education.
The only additional comment that I would make too is in prioritizing what Colleen had called the non-negotiables, contractual increases, things that are legally bound to do, contingency is meant to cover the, the unknowns, right? And if we are intentionally building those into the plan for the upcoming year, in theory, that should lessen our need to draw on contingency in the future. So that's where I get comfortable in holding it at that slightly lower level.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So I look at last year's budget cut. So we do a 6% budget cut in the Special Act Department and 15% on the wellness. So when I look at your, we saw departmental budget this year, I think special ed is always very high on a lot of people's mind. What are we going to do to restore the cuts that we did, you know, last year? If I reveal the last year's, you know, budget cut, we, the 6% budget reductions, you conference to eliminations of around 17.5 positions. And then on the wellness health preventions of 50% budget reductions, is the difference to eliminate six positions in the mental health prevention programming in school? Are we, are we doing something to restore those item 100% in this upcoming year's budget?
The superintendent's cabinet is reviewing their requests this week. And so we actually have time set aside tomorrow to go into the level of detail. So there is not a decision yet as to what we will bring forward to the Board of Education regarding positions added into departments as that conversation still needs to occur tomorrow.
Yeah. So one of our goals this year is to get feedback, get input, get feedback, get priorities as we continue to make those decisions. So as we get going forward in the days and weeks to come, we will continue to prioritize our department-based budgets and what we're building back. So what you're asking, Kevin, is why we're, we're getting feedback from you. We're also working with our DLT, so it'd be our principals and department-level leaders to get feedback on all of our priorities. And then we'll continue to build that out and build that forward.
Go ahead Susan.
Great, thank you. So I want to build on, on what Corey was just talking about with the feedback piece. And I also want to thank you for slide 12 where you do have it broken out by strategic theme. I think that's really helpful. I think we budget our values and what a difference a year makes, right? A year ago, we were cutting 30 million. Now we're looking at potentially 35 million for new revenue. Not counting 8.6 million one time for the supplemental, not counting the SRR one time money. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is I'm assuming like slide 12 with the strategic themes. This is based on what resources are needed to help implement the strategic theme and where those priorities are. So Corey, you mentioned, you know, getting feedback and input. I'm, I'm wondering, we were talking about significant resources. We're talking about this opportunity to reinvent even certain ways that we do business. How are students weighing in and how are parents weighing in? And how are teachers and other people as we make, you know, these, these decisions with the budget?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think, you know, a number of things, as you take a look at that slide 12 as we talked about. You know, of the roughly 30 to 31 million dollars in cuts. One of the things that, that Colleen shared is 17 million of that 30 to 31 was out of department based budgets. Another three point or about 3 million out of central administration. And then 3.5 million roughly out of site based budgets. When you look at those requests coming back, the requests from the departments are less. So we've tried, we're trying to be much more purposeful. How we identify our gaps, how would you match it with strategic plan? Align it like you said, to what's in the best interest to make the biggest difference is where we've gone. Now, this is the next step of process of showing out a little bit of what we're doing and getting that feedback. So working with the board of education, all of you to give us your priorities. Working then with district letter, the level teams and leaders, so at the DLT and principals. I think the next stage is as everyone gets a chance to see this, we're going to find ways in which after DLT, how do we help our, our staff and employees start to see it? That's part of the work of, of department leaders, so directors and principals to help to, to make sure that in our, in our schools with their SAC, in our schools with our BLTs and our teacher leaders, that we're able to start to say, what feedback do we have? We need to continue to build more voice, that engagement with our community. That's the other side of, of our next step of how do we continue to engage with the priorities of what we need? Kevin brought up a great one within special education. So as we start taking a look at where are we and where do we move in forward? I think those are the, the topics that we're going to continue to build for and get that, that input. So I don't know if I answered that with the detail you're looking for. I also want you to know that in this process, we're starting a little bit earlier. We don't have all the time in the world, but we never do with budgets. But how we continue to build those systems to get the feedback. Especially when we're trying to be much more purposeful in finding those pin pushpoints. Transportation is one that, that is a big topic. Looking at special education and some of those areas. Kevin talked about what roles could we add back? And we are looking at cabinet feedback and then also listen to our system about what other things do we need to add? And change and increase to be better and to look at our whole system of, of that feedback. The, the, I'll also, our committee feedback, when you go back several slides and looking at what people recommend. You know, that's also good, that's on slide nine. That's also a great way in which we, we try to use our, our district committees to also give feedback on that. So with the DAC and priorities of that. So, you know, I agree with you wholeheartedly, that vision, that plan to move forward. How are we going to use our money to move that forward? And the last slides after this in your feedback is really starting to break down the SRR funds a little bit. This unique year with the additional funds and then the supplemental piece with the SRR allows us to be a little more flexible. We're planning for some one time things that are unique to this school year and next school year. But then also it's creating a vision of moving us forward for years to come.
Well, directors, I think Colleen, Kate, let's go ahead and finish out some of the things you wanted us to know. And then we'll have some time for questions at the end.
All right, so the timeline of what we have left before you ultimately will vote on the adopted budget in June. So beginning bright and early tomorrow morning, we are presenting the 2021, so current year department budgets to district leadership team. This is probably our principals plus some department directors to provide some education on the current year budget to set the stage. Go into this a little bit more on the next slide. Simultaneously, the superintendent is reviewing all of the requests and providing his internal recommendation to move forward for you all. So that when we come back on April 20th, on board of education meeting, we will be presenting the department budget requests that align with the priorities that have been discussed thus far. So getting your feedback tonight will directly influence the materials that will be presented to you about a month from now. So then moving into May, on May 11th, that's when we'll bring to you the full proposed budget for next year. So that's inclusive of all of our schools, departments and funds. That same day, we'll also be presenting our third quarter financials for the current year, which will have a really good indication as to where we're going to end the year. So you can see the available fund balance that we have to dedicate towards next year. At that same point in time, the legislature should, in theory, have introduced the School Finance Act by then. We will not know until we get much closer to that May date whether the School Finance Act will be introduced prior to our proposed budget or after. And so that will influence where we go with revenue. We were in the same spot last year with a delayed school finance introduction. And then moving into June, the legislature does need to pass the School Finance Act. And the governor does need to sign that before the end of the month as that is required by law to go into effect for July 1. At which point you will also adopt a budget for the upcoming school year. And that date's currently set for June 15th, but I believe there has been discussion to move that meeting back to June 22nd. So those are the two potential dates at which the budget may be adopted by the board of education. The next slide please. So speaking a little bit more to what's going to happen tomorrow and on Friday, the superintendent cabinet will be presenting that, those current year budgets to the DLT. And the goal of those presentations is really three part. Number one, to educate leaders on the size of the department budgets over time. Number two, to explain the role and impact on the school district of the various positions that were in the department. For example, if we're talking about the business services department, Kate will be saying what role the budget team provides to our schools. And then thirdly, to review the cuts that were made in order to balance the budget in 2021 due to the COVID related budget cuts that we made. So it's really an effort to set the stage and provide education to leaders. And so that they have that information moving into recommendations for 21, 22. And the goal is that these meetings will be recorded so that the board of education has access to those recordings to hear some of that detailed conversation that will occur on department budgets if they choose to. Kate?
SRR, we will have a lot more detail as we come back to you actually next week and talk about the more detailed plans around e-learning as well as some of the interventions and supports heading into the summer and into next year. A lot of this you've seen before and I just want to kind of reiterate the focus of the three different pools of SRR money. So SRR one was really kind of, you know, emergency related expenses. So PPE disinfecting equipment, some of the software and licensing that couldn't be covered through the, the CRF funds. Really just kind of that emergency immediate kind of nature allocation or spend. SRR two and SRR three, still developing the actual budget request for these funds. But will be used largely to support the, the unfinished learning and summer programming tutoring interventions, credit recovery, you know, all of those supports as we look into planning for summer of this year, all four quarters of next year and then the following summer of the next school year. And so as I said, we'll have a lot more detail on the use of the planning for those things. I'm also looking to see what, if anything, we might be able to cover through our SRR funds in support of, of e-learning. So it is possible that we could fund that two and a half million that we were planning to, to set aside for e-learning from our SRR funds and then free up a little bit of the general fund. But again, these funds work a little bit differently than our CRF funding in that we have to submit a formal grant request or grant budget and have that approved before we can start to obligate spending. And so we'll have to go through some iterations through CDE to make sure that, you know, we've got allowable expenses and things of that nature. And we didn't want to hold up the planning, especially around e-learning, knowing that how imperative it was that staff begin to get, you know, hired and selected for positions within that program. So that's why we've earmarked it out of the general fund for now. But it is likely that we will move at least a portion, if not all, of that supportive e-learning into either SRR two or, or SRR three. And as I said, when we come to you next week, Mr. Knights, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Windsor, lots of conversation around how those programs are being developed and what that budget request is starting to look like for the use of those, those two funding sources. So the last slide is really just SRR three, which I had already spoken to. We still don't know what the total allocation will be there. Back of the envelope math, just looking at the size of the overall stimulus package in comparison to the other two. We are estimating a very rough estimate of about 10 to 12 million dollars in available funding. And, you know, look forward to having some continued conversations about the use of those resources. So with that, we are, we are ready for questions really across the entirety of, of the conversation.
Thanks again, Kate. And again, I think we need to reiterate that this is just the beginning in terms of just laying the foundation as we continue to look at various different tiers that will continue to build up to that June date. So we, we need to be accepting that we may not have all the answers now to, to many of the questions. So with that, board directors, what are some things you're wondering about in terms of what we've seen tonight? And again, I'm going to ask you guys to jump in because I don't, or at least if I can get back to a, to our matrix view. So I can see directors.
I had to raise my hand.
All right, Kevin, I couldn't see it, sorry.
For the board, should, where should the board give some directions on what priority that we see is more important? I, last year, when we do the budget cut, we do our calls to board departmental budget, our cut for every departments. But, but I think there's actually, I'm just wondering this year, when we restore departmental budget, should the board weigh in and give some directions to see what departments that we wish to see more increase?
So Kevin, the pacing that I'm understanding, April 6th at our next board meeting, we do have an agenda item specific to just talk about our overall priorities from the board. And then on April 20th, it's my understanding that we will talk more about the department budgets at that time. So that's kind of the, the sequence of events. Any, but does that answer the question, Kevin, that you're wondering about the win question?
I, I think the earliest we give the boss priority, you know, the better so that they could formulate the budget based on what the board thinks is more, you know, is more urgent and, and feed into our overall goal for next year. But, but yes, thank you very much for letting me know the timeline.
So I'd also say informally, we're also getting your feedback tonight. So Kevin, I heard you talk about special education. We've heard talk about reserves. We've heard talk about raise in salary and what are the best ways to look at doing this? So I want you to know as, as we listen to you and you go through and give your verbal pieces, we're going back also with our DLT feedback to continue to tweak, change, modify, show where priorities could go. And then there'll be some more formal ways in which we get your feedback. So this discussion and this, this dialogue of understanding is part of that feedback to help us understand where are your priorities? So again, each of you wanted to state a little bit, you already kind of have in different ways, but we're trying to take notes of themes and, and topics and your priorities within this also. You know, this is an informal process of dialogue, digging in deeper, letting you ask questions of understanding. And then it also allows us to go back to say, where are our points that we need to help in understanding? Where are points that we want to then say, when all these options and scenarios, where should we build forward and, and, and continue to build as our, our highest priority? For lack of a better word, and work our way within other, other topics.
I actually want to clarify, I mentioned two things, special ed and mental health.
Perfect.
I don't want to oversimplify what we've seen tonight, Kate and Colleen, but it feels to me like we're looking at a restoration budget as opposed to a budget where we're building. It's really restoring what we lost. And, and I think that's what maybe is a little difficult. You know, we can talk about priorities all we want. But the reality is that we started out with a deficit in terms of losing some really essential resources and services for kids. And so I don't know if that's, if that's fair. Cause I know we certainly are, you know, we want to be positive about the, the, the news we've heard tonight. But at the same time, we had a 30 minute, you know, a $30 million hole that we carved out of our budget that we're now saying, we've got priorities to fill that hole back up because those were, those were essential resources that we felt was, were, were critical. So I don't know if that's a fair way to describe what we're hearing tonight, but it seems to me that that's your focus is what can we restore first? Before we really talk about how do we build for the future?
I do think that's accurate, Dr. Ray, with maybe one caveat. Important to note that it's not a one for one restoration. So, you know, as Colleen mentioned, it was about $17 million that were reduced out of, out of the central office budgets. And many of those are in direct support of schools. They just happen to be held centrally, but we're not requesting that that is a dollar for dollar, you know, budget increase to completely restore that. And I've been very impressed, you know, this is my first year obviously sitting through the, the DBB meetings and how thoughtful, you know, people are in that planning and really thinking about how our work has changed. Kind of in this, in this new normal and where we can innovate and maybe not bring back the exact FTE or the resource that was cut, but I could actually, you know, get a two for one if I do, you know, something a little bit different. And, and just thinking really, really thoughtfully about what those requests are that were made.
Thanks, yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah, first I, I want to just give a big thanks to Colleen and Kate for the presentation. I think, you know, we, we need to kind of look back and kind of remember the, where we were a year ago a little bit. I think, because I think what's been presented is a really something that is providing a great healing mechanism to where we were very responsibly. And I know we talk a lot about the fiscal responsibility of the district and how well we do. I think this not only has shown that and, you know, again, provided options based on that. But I also think it's done something where, that we always ask and we look for surveys, we look for feedback. And it kind of maps out to the priorities that we receive from one of our, our core committees, the DAC. So, you know, it's with that, I feel what's been presented as a first cut, if you will, really goes a long way to healing what we, where we were. And then also makes, potentially makes a lot, you know, makes a lot of people whole with that. So I just want to give a, a segment of thanks. I think, you know, again, we, we have to, I think, can't have it all right back. I think we, we have to kind of remember where we were. But I think this is a, I don't know, I feel what was presented tonight was very, very comprehensive. And, you know, again, it gets us in a restorative place that we haven't been in a while.
Well said, Anthony. Other directors, other things? Krista, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you guys again for all the information. I'm going to go back to the, basically the COVID relief dollars and you, you had a couple. the, um, basically the COVID relief dollars and you, you had a couple of slides summarizing that. And um, so basically mine centers around that all of our students at all of our schools benefited from all of the COVID relief federal and state funds. Um, and some of our students and schools benefited from additional ones that weren't on the chart, and those were the PPP dollars. And I'm doing this from memory, which is a really bad idea, but I want to say that we had schools that applied and had about a cumulative maybe eight million dollars that was rec- received um in PPP funding. So it was a substantial amount for those students and schools that received it. And all that to say, how are we looking at that through the lens of equity? Um, you know, we, we revised our SBB formula for our district governing schools so that we were making sure that the dollars went where they were needed most um in, in, in an even better way. Um, and I just want to make sure that if we're, that we're accounting for that, that there are some students and schools who received additional COVID relief funds and, and how are we, are, if we are accounting for that?
Apply for the PPP. Um, when those loans were, when those funds were first applied for, it was meant to be a loan and subsequently those loans were able to be forgiven. Um, within the guidance for not only our, um, our federal funds, S R, uh, the one, two and three, um, funds through the coronavirus relief fund, um, as well as our state general fund. Um, guidance tells us how we must allocate to our charter schools. And so we don't have the ability to offset or reduce uh their funding because they have the ability to um fundraise or, or seek additional um revenue opportunities. So we are, um, we are, you know, working closely. We've had some questions from, from neighboring districts on this same topic and have made some outreach to CDE to see if there is any, any leeway or, or change in that guidance, especially with these, you know, subsequent rounds of funding after it was known that PPP would be forgiven. But at this time, we have no latitude to adjust um how we, how we pass through those dollars, but it is something we continue to explore.
Thank you for looking into that.
Very good, directors. Anything else?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think you've seen my hand, David. It's so weird. I'm sorry that. I just want to, um, Colleen and Kate, thank you. And I loved the language, Kate, innovate um and look at the budget and see where there can be some continuing thinking about how to, to make it better for kids. Um, and I, I do want to piggyback on something Kevin said too, and since Corey was very speci- he was asking, what are, what are we thinking about priorities? And, and I just want to make sure that we are saying, you know, student services and, and staff recognition um are really important. But I also want to see that built in to an ongoing budget that is highlighted under our strategic plan themes um in how and where those specific things are being addressed. And I'd like to um also emphasize transportation. We've heard so, we've heard so often about transportation, student support services, and then the um innovative ways that we can look at how to support our kids in, in their current needs, whatever those needs might be through this COVID experience. So I'd like to hear some innovative um financial supports for, for COVID support or past COVID support in the next. And I saw some reference to that. So um, just want to make sure also that I appreciate and thank you guys for the work that you've done to this point. And I also really want you to hear that having the opportunity to look at this and think through it with you is very much appreciated. Transparency is very appreciated. So the more transparent you can be with us, then I feel more um I guess trust in what's it, to use a really important word, um, in where the money is actually going and how it's being spent and how it relates specifically to our strategic themes. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Christine. And I think you captured well that that's the purpose of this session tonight was to think through the budget together. And we will have, as I mentioned before, our next opportunity, our regular board meeting, we will be able to continue then to provide Kate and Colleen some feedback from a board perspective about things that we definitely want to make sure we, we value and that we prioritize and that we look at. So that'll be our next opportunity. Kate, Colleen, any other words at the end here that you have for us, or are we ready to close up our work session for tonight? All right, seeing, seeing no words. Um, again, thank you, Corey. Thank you, Kate. Colleen, I also wanted to acknowledge, we had several cabinet members on the line too. We saw Amanda earlier, Rich, Ian, uh, Danny, Matt, Danell, Ted. Uh, just thank you also for being on the line as well and being prepared to jump in as needed. So I just wanted to acknowledge and of course, our, our wonderful assistant secretary, uh, Sandy, who's uh, uh, always, always behind the scenes for us, as well as Chris Shalene and Mark Blair. Um, thank you all for, for being here tonight. Board, we do have um some issues that need to be discussed in executive session, which is a closed session, to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four oh two, four A. Also, uh, to determine matters relative to real estate negotiations, to develop strategy for such negotiations, and to instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four oh two, four E, as well as to hold conference with our legal counsel to receive advice on specific, on specific legal questions uh pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B. During executive session, uh, the board is not allowed to adopt a proposed policy, resolution or resolution, uh, or take any um formal action. Given that we do have a quorum of all our board members present, we need a two thirds vote to move into executive session. When you make your motion, I would suggest that you make the motion to close our work session and convene our executive session, let's say at six fifteen, to give us a fifteen minute break uh to grab some bites as well as to, just to, to take a break for a moment. And I, at this time, would ask for that motion.
Motion to move uh to close the current ex- uh, work sessions and start the executive session at seven fifteen.
Okay, motion made by Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Meek. Thank you. Our executive session also will include consultation with, of course, interim superintendent Wise, chief operating officer, Rich Cosgrove, planning manager, Derek Sturts, outside legal counsel, Kristen Edgar from Kaplan and Ernest.